All matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For anyone wishing to make public comments, the procedures for getting to have public comments, referred into the last page of these agenda items. Annabelle, do you see any public comments?
Ma- Mayor, there is no one wishing to speak and we did not receive any written comments.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, consisting of items seven one, wave reading. Item seven two, a resolution approving wastewater and park system development fee credits for McRoy Welber communities for countryside one and two subdivisions. Is anyone wishing to pull any far, any items on the consent calendar?
Mayor, one quick clarification, it was pointed out to me, there's an error on the resolution of the fee credit item and it is in the very last section under the now therefore be resolved. It, it references a number of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The six and five were inadvertently transposed. It should be three hundred and seventy-two, five hundred and sixty dollars, twenty-three cents.
Who caught it?
Your vice mayor did.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to repeat that number, vice mayor?
Uh, I'll, I'll let you handle that one, sir.
I know, I'm, I'm looking for a motion for the consent calendar. Would that change?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with that amendment.
I'll second that emotion.
We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Council authority members, Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item eight, unfinished business eight one, second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two approving the first amendment to the development agreement by and between the city of Riverbank and Pacific Cooperative Inc., a California cooperative corporation doing business as flavors.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading of the item we discussed at length a couple of months ago and then last, last meeting, there have been no changes to the proposed ordinance since, since the first reading and be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions, I've shown. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
Mayor, there is no one wishing to speak and we did not receive any written comments.
Thank you. Bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion that we accept item eight point one as so stated.
Vice Mayor, you're ready here. I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve by council member Campbell and a second by vice mayor. Roll call, please.
At this moment, I'd like to recognize that council member Barbara Martinez has joined us and the roll call is council member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine, consisting of workshops, item nine one, workshop fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, special revenue and enterprise fund budget.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, council. This evening, we, or this year, rather, we decided to do things a little differently with regard to budget workshops. I mean, in past years, we, especially in, in very tight years, we just did it all in one evening. This year, as we still have a little work left to do on the general fund, we have decided to split out special revenue enterprise funds, just so we could take a little bit deeper of a dive into those and Marisela can share with you some, some successes and some challenges that we have in, in gas, water, sewer and public benefits. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Today is the first of two workshops that we will be having on the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So as the city manager mentioned, we will be looking at the special revenue and enterprise funds today. It'll give you a chance to dive into some of those more public works related budgets so that you have an opportunity to review those prior to bringing those back for adoption in June. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And so we have for you the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget workshop. Just so that you and the members of the public understand what our major funds are with regards to special revenue and enterprise funds. Those major funds include, they usually receive the majority of the city's revenues other than the general fund. They are typically discretionary within the revenue source that we receive and they also provide major resources for the operations of the city. And so tonight, we will be discussing an overview of the gas tax fund, the sewer fund, the water fund and our public benefit fund. Some of the major impacts that all of the funds felt due to COVID nineteen was a decrease in some type of revenue. For gas tax, it was a decrease in fuel cells due to the fact that residents were working from home, students were also at home in order to do their schooling and so that obviously impacted sale of fuel. In addition, water and sewer revenues saw a loss of penalty fees, which is an important funding source for our utility rate assistance program. And that was due to the city's councils' desire to assist our residents who had been impacted by COVID nineteen, those that may have lost their employment or their employment's closed down for a period of time during the shelter in place. Now, I do want to mention that sewer and water, although we lost in penalty fees, we did see an offsetting increase in the actual utility rate fees that we charge and mostly because of the fact that residents were at home. Therefore, there was more water usage being used as students and their parents were, were at home. So major expenditure impacts, we're going to see salary and benefit increases throughout all of our funds. We are in the, about to enter the fourth year of our four-year labor contract. So we do have negotiated cost of living adjustments of two percent for our bargaining units. There's also continued increases in our unfunded PERS liability, which is our pension. And then in addition, we've got some rate study projects that are going to come into play as well as some necessary delayed maintenance that can now be addressed as the rate study projects were completed. Or in the case of our water fund, we finally are able to collect sufficient revenues in order to begin those rate study projects that we promised back in two thousand fifteen. So let's start with our gas tax fund. This is just a picture of one of our SB one projects that we were able to complete this fiscal year. That is our Santa Fe Road overlay. So we were very excited that we have the ability to capture these revenues from the state in order to do some necessary upgrades to some of our streets that that are in need of maintenance and repairs. So just an overview of gas tax. As you'll note, we do have an increase of seventy-two thousand, one hundred in our revenues and our expenditures are going to see an increase of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. I will say that on the expenditure side, the majority of that increase will be due to SB one projects that we will be performing. The city collects SB one revenues on an annual basis. Once we have sufficient funding, then Kathleen will normally come to the city council and program the budgeting for that project. So although we're going to see deficit spending on the project side for SB one, we have monies rolling forward on an annual basis in order to go ahead and perform those projects. As the city manager mentioned, we do have on the operations and maintenance side a significant deficit that unfortunately, the general fund will need to pick up and assist. So just an overview, our maintenance budget is experiencing deficit spending. It's caused by decreased revenues. As we mentioned, a lot of residents were staying home. We still have many residents who will most likely stay home and work from home rather than traveling to a job site. There's an increase in material costs for certain maintenance item and then of course, the increase in personnel and benefit costs. So the initial shortfall that we are projecting for the upcoming fiscal year is a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Now, that's a pretty large increase given that this year, our shortfall was eighty-seven thousand dollars. We're, once we reach the end of the fiscal year, obviously we'll know what the full impact is of that shortfall for this year. We hope to be able to mitigate some of that with some, some cost-saving measures that we've put into place. And just some of the major upcoming expenditures on the SB one project side for gas tax. We've got some valley gutter repairs, some pavement restoration. This is, I believe, the fourth year of pavement restoration that we've been able to do with SB one funds. And then we will be doing an overlay of Topeka Avenue in two different sections of town. So one on the east side of the railroad tracks and one on the west side of the railroad tracks. And that will take us then to an overview of our sewer fund. And so overall, we're going to see a positive increase in revenues in sewer. We are definitely experiencing an increase due to commercial residents who are now being billed for their consumption. So the way that our commercial rates are built in sewer is there is a base fee that they pay and then there's an additional consumption-based fee that's also assessed to commercial residents. Typically, the reason for that is because you do have a lot more activity occurring in a commercial business versus a residential home. So for example, a restaurant will pay a higher consumption fee than let's say, an office, any office space here in Riverbank. And that's due to the nature of the type of business that it is. So sewer will have their continued water usage throughout the day as they're washing dishes, et cetera, as well as their grease traps that they're having to maintain. And then some of that flows into our sewer system. So we do accommodate for that. And on the expenditure side, you're going to see a significant decrease. That's because we will be completing the allocation of funds for our sewer rate study project. So this current fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, we allocated approximately two point five million dollars for the completion of our rate study projects. What our public works director has done is that we have allocated funds over the past four years. Now that we have a larger pot of money, we'll be able to go in and bid out all of the rate study projects at one time, hopefully achieve an economy of scales for that and then be able to complete all of the projects as we promised through the rate study process. The sewer fund receives ninety-seven percent of its revenues from our user fees. So that includes both our residential and commercial customers. In the upcoming fiscal year, we are projecting a twelve percent increase in revenues. As I mentioned, due to the consumption billing for commercial customers. We do anticipate in this upcoming budget, the return of penalties for those that have delinquent billings. And as I mentioned, we will have that significant decrease in expenditures due to the rate study projects that have already been prefunded. And some of the major sewer expenditures that we are requesting funding for in the upcoming fiscal year, now that we've completed the rate study projects, the funding that is coming in can be set aside for capital projects that are still related to sewer. And so in the upcoming year, we're looking at upgrades to two of our lift stations, one on Estelle Avenue and one on Jackson. We're helping to upgrade the electrical panels there and that's at a cost of approximately eighty thousand dollars. We're also looking to upgrade our SCADA system. The SCADA system is what runs our lift stations. It is sort of the heart of it. It gives all of our staff information on how the system is operating, if there's any maintenance issues that need to be addressed. It notifies us of any potential sewer sanitary overflows that may be approaching if there's issues. And so we, we want to take advantage and be able to do those upgrades as the funding becomes available. So that's approximately twenty-three thousand dollars. We have equipment replacement on here as well. And so some of that equipment is equipment that is old and aging. For example, we have a tractor that has more than exceeded its useful life. At this point, it's no longer operable and so what's been happening is that staff has actually been renting a tractor. And so in order to avoid the continual rental cost that we have, because it's being rented on a month-to-month basis, since it's a piece of equipment that is constantly being used, not just by our sewer department, but by all of our divisions in public works, we felt that it would be a good opportunity now that funding is becoming available to be able to replace that old tractor, be able to send back that rental that we have and be able to have our, our own equipment here. So the equipment replacement of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, that does include the replacement of the tractor for twenty-six thousand dollars. And then the second piece of equipment that we're looking to purchase is a trailer-mounted jetter. And basically, this would be a smaller scale of our Vactor truck. And so it would provide us with some redundancy. Number one, in the event that we had multiple areas that we needed to use this equipment at, at least we would have two in order to be able to do that. Second, our Vactor truck is a CNG-fueled vehicle. Lately, we've been having some, some issues with our CNG fueling station and in the event that we did not have that readily available due to lack of fuel, we wanted to make sure that we had a piece of equipment that we would continue to use should we have, should we need it during the downtime of our Vactor truck. The last project that we will be looking to replace is a vertical pump at the wastewater treatment plant. They have two pumps currently at the wastewater treatment plant that are over fifty years old. So we're looking to replace one this fiscal year and then a second one the upcoming fiscal year and be able to put those on a more consistent replacement cycle as we should be. That takes us to our water fund. Our water fund budget in, similar to our sewer fund, we are looking at an anticipated increase in revenues. Over the past year, we've been able to capture usage data from our residents. Now, mind you, the past year has been quite different from a typical year due to the fact that people were at home and not being able to go out as much. So although we are adjusting our revenues somewhat based on that usage, we are taking into consideration the fact that their children will be returning to school. You know, we do have members of the public that will be returning to the job site while others will remain home. So we have accommodated for, for that scenario. Our expenditures, we're also looking at an increase of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And the primary reason for that is the fact that we are now able to start funding our rate study projects. So our water fund receives ninety-nine percent of its revenues from our user fees. So in the upcoming fiscal year, we'll have a forty percent increase in revenues due to that consumption billing that we initiated last year. It anticipates the return of penalties for delinquencies, similar to our sewer fund. And we now have our rate study project expenses that we're able to start allocating funds towards. And so the major expenditures, these are the four of the first of the five-year rate study projects that we will be allocating funds for. So we've got water line replacements in various areas of Riverbank. So we'll begin, similar to what we are doing with our sewer rate study projects, is we'll begin to set aside this funding and then be able to do all of the projects at one time. Now, we do have for city council consideration tonight and it is feedback that we are soliciting from you on two proposed projects. These two would be funded from a combination of sewer and water as they would be primarily focused on those two areas. The first is a citizen request management system. And so what is this system? This system is a online system. It's an application that residents can download onto their smartphones. If they see a broken water line, if they see a pothole, if they have a concern with one of the city's trees, if they see anything of concern regarding city property. And it's an easy way for the residents to be able to log in, put in their concern. It immediately goes to staff. It gets allocated out to staff since it's all electronic. All of our staff have cell phones or iPads available to them that they're using out in the field. So they'd be able to get that work request immediately and then be able to schedule that in to, to be addressed. And so it's an easy way for our residents to just be able to log in. They'd also be able to track and get updates on where this is in the process, if it's been assigned to staff and hopefully be able to, to, for them to obtain a resolution on the concern that they've, they've indicated. So it is an annual cost to our enterprise funds of approximately thirteen thousand, eight hundred. We feel that it would be a benefit to our residents, but this is something that we want to make sure you as the city council have an opportunity to review and discuss. Should you feel that it is a benefit, then we would go ahead and include it as part of the final budget that will be presented to you for adoption. Now, the second is a bigger ask for both the water and sewer funds. This past year, the city was able to take advantage of the purchase of land right next to our corporation yard. If you're familiar with our corporation yard, it's sort of stuck in an area where there's not a lot of room for expansion. We were fortunate enough that a property that is adjacent to it became vacant, was sold at auction. We were able to get that at a very good price. City staff has already tore down the house that was initially there. They've already graded the, the land and it's ready for us to be able to put a new administration building. As the water fund has become healthier, now that we, we have consumption billing, as our sewer fund continues to grow due to the completion of the rate study projects and now having funds available for other capital projects, we felt this was a good time to be able to present this to the city council. We are not looking for, you know, the Taj Mahal's of buildings for public works, but we are looking for something that will be able to satisfy their current needs as well as expansion for staff in the future. As the city grows, public work staff will need to grow and we want to make sure that we're accommodating their needs in the future as well. So we are looking to allocate approximately four hundred thousand dollars in funding with fifty percent coming from sewer and fifty percent coming from water for this project. Um, with fifty percent coming from sewer and fifty percent coming from water uh, for this project. And then our public benefit fund. Uh, so many of you are familiar with our public benefit fund, this is where our cannabis revenues are set aside. Uh, the city council has a very specific um, expenditure policy for this. And uh, during the course of the past um, year. Uh, staff has been working on renegotiating the development agreements that are uh, associated with the revenues that we receive. Um, from our cannabis-related businesses. Uh, so for the upcoming fiscal year, we are looking at a decrease. And that is because of the renegotiated um, development agreement that was just approved tonight. Uh, with flavors. Now expenditure-wise, we're also looking at a decrease for the upcoming fiscal year. That's due to the completion of some one-time projects that the city council funded. So we are looking at a forty-two percent decrease in revenues. Um, the one-time capital projects that were completed in the current fiscal year or are set to be completed in the current fiscal year. Is the uh, community uh, center kitchen remodel, the expansion of our camera system. And then we have the museum project that was just approved a couple of city council meetings ago. Um, that we hope we will uh, complete by the end of the fiscal year. Um, annual funding, what our funding will go towards in the upcoming fiscal year on an annual basis. And these are our ongoing expenditures that we will have, is the monitoring of our camera system. And then um, funding that's set aside for law enforcement. So we do fund one deputy sheriff position from here and our community resource officer position as well. So what's next from here? So we will have a general fund budget workshop on June eighth. Um, that'll give you an opportunity to review uh, revenues and expenses for our general fund, which is one of our largest funds. Um, in the upcoming fiscal year, we're looking at approximately eleven million dollar um, budget for our general fund. Which is a significant growth o- over the past three fis- um, fiscal years. Uh, we will have after feedback from council, final budget adoption on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. I do wanna make you aware, and I think I have mentioned it a couple of times. Calpers is going through their asset liability and management process, ALM process. Um, currently, this will affect the city's expenses. There's gonna be no doubt. While we wish it would benefit us in seeing decreases to our um, contribution rates for our pensions. Unfortunately, it tends not to work that way. Particularly because of the way that the market, investment market is currently performing. Um, we know that there's gonna be some increases to come. When Calpers undergoes this project. It typ- typically will take a two fiscal year cycle before we see the effect. So this will give us an opportunity to start to prepare for that. Um, as we see um, their recommendations to the Calpers board. Uh, we will be giving city council updates um. So that we can start to prepare with how do we wanna mitigate the impact we're going to feel when Calpers. Places all of those recommendations into place. And then in addition, we, as I mentioned, we are entering the last of our um. For your contract for our labor uh, groups. And so in January twenty-twenty-two, we will begin um, labor negotiations. With the largest of our bargaining units, which is the miscellaneous or Launa Group. And so that is the end of my presentation on these major funds. Uh, the information that you received in your agenda package includes sort of the face sheet. Which gives you a high-level overview of all of the line, line item expenses and revenues of each of these major funds. And shows you where we have significant increases or decreases. Uh, we also provided to you all of the backup that we get from our um, departments. We wanted to make sure that you had an understanding of where um, all of our funding goes to. What type of expenses are paid from each of the line items. Now, I do wanna say that during the year, we give our departments a lot of flexibility to move funding around. Within those line items. At the end of the day, what we are focused on is making sure that the departments are meeting the goals. That the city council has set, whether that was through a strategic plan process or through city council direction. Um, and we also wanna make sure that we don't exceed that budget. And so as long as we're not exceeding that overall budget and we're meeting our goals, you know. The city manager and I are very open to um, moving funds around within the line item. So generally, the city um, departments are very good at sticking to that um, expenditure sheet that they gave us. And those are their ongoing expenses, and it helps us understand that so that we know what to prepare for in the upcoming years. Um, but they do have some flexibility there. Um, and we also provided to you our revenue um, calculations so that you could see where our revenues. Um, were in the past and where they're growing to. So I am available for any questions. And as I mentioned, we are looking for specific feedback on the two projects that we are hoping to fund from our water and sewer funds. So I'm just going to go ahead and move um, my presentation back to that. Thank you.
This is Councilmember Barbara Martinez, uh, good evening, everyone. Okay, so um, I think that the citizen request management system is a very good idea. I think that uh, our citizens would appreciate uh, having a way to um, you know, let us know. Any kind of situations that we may be able to uh, address right away. And um, I do believe that our public works administration building is probably well worth it. I uh, don't know if we're, if we're looking at modules or if we're looking at building something from the ground up. But whatever, I do believe that we do need to be able to uh, have a space where they can um, expand. And I had one question uh, about our developments that we have coming for the future. Both the east and the west side and our wastewater treatment plant. Have we considered what kind of upgrades or what kind of uh, planning? We need to make sure that our wastewater treatment plant will address all of the new development that's coming our way. Thank you.
So um, Councilmember Barbara, he has all handled that part of the question. Um, actually, next meeting on June eighth. We have our wastewater master plan and recycled water master plan is now complete. Actually, just this afternoon, I went through a full uh, review of it with the engineer. So it's ready for council to digest, it's a pretty lengthy document. Um, for, highly complex. And so what I think we're gonna do is we'll workshop it with you next meeting, giving everybody plenty of time to read it without any kind of commitment needed. And then at a meeting thereafter, we'll ask for either adoption or amendment of it. But yes, the, the point of the plan among many other things is to address any kind of future capacity needs that we're gonna need for. Uh, generally seem to be okay hydraulically with our current developments that we have going on. But certainly, as we continue to grow, uh, uh, changes to that plan are gonna be needed, and so we'll go through that on the eighth.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Reba here, um, so I'm, I'm in support of both projects. So the first one, the citizen request management system. Um, I've used the counties, uh, it's ex- ex- it's the exact same app, the GoRequest app. I've submitted a ticket uh, in the past and found there were some challenges when uh, closing out tickets, so if we move forward with this. Um, if there's a way we can improve on how the tickets are closed compared to the county's, uh, how the way the county's handling it. Uh, maybe by sending like completed pictures when, you know, the, the ticket's actually taken care of. I think would um, be a little bit helpful. Uh, the public works admin building, uh, hundred percent uh, agree with that, let's move forward. Uh, we acquired the property at a, a, a great, a great uh, price, so let's move forward with that. Uh, I do have one question uh, for the water fund. So there is, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar allocation that's going, that was to, or is towards the water conservation. Um, so we use that uh, for a position that's no longer in place, and uh, we use it for other resources like flyers. So seeing as this is, this allotment's uh, won't need a budget adjustment, and I'm kinda hoping um. Some of the other council members will support me in this, um, can we use this towards um, a turf and drought-resistant rebate program? Um, you know, we can go into the details down the road if, if council's um, up for it. But it would have a max rebate of a thousand uh, until the funds run out, uh, we can pilot the program. See if it's successful, and then maybe uh, think about expanding it after that, um, that's all I have, thank you.
And um, uh, Vice Mayor, I, I'll just add to your comment about the drought relief program, since we talked about it uh, quite a bit. Um, just to, I know council knows this, but for the community that might be watching, a, a, a large, large portion. Um, in some cases, on more than three-quarters of all water usage on a residential parcel is irrigation. So what you use inside your house is really not the vast majority of the water that we use. Um, in fact, we know that number generally because we know how many gallons of water we process at our sewer plant. And we know how many gallons of water we pump through our wells, and so you could kind of, you know, gather what the difference is. Um, and so one of the most effective ways is to get people that want to, it's not required. To move to more drought-tolerant uh, front yards, you save quite a bit of water that way.
Thank you, Sean.
I'm not as familiar with the, the app that we're proposing to use, and I, I guess that was a concern is. If it'll be um, efficient in processing the request. Uh, would we be able to pilot other apps as well if they're um, ones that are recommended? And is it also easy to use in different languages?
Uh, so the public works department has already um, gone through demonstrations of various apps. And they felt that this was going to be um, the most user-friendly to our residents as well as to our staff. In being able to address all of the service tickets that come in. So um, we hope that, you know, as um, residents continue to use the app. That their knowledge of it will be able to grow as well of ours, as our staff. Um, and then we'll definitely try to market that and be able to include as many um, uh, different languages there as we can if possible.
I'd just like to say that I agree with uh, what Councilmember Martinez. And for the most part, what the Vice Mayor talked about, so I won't be redundant and repeat all that. And I'm very interested in looking at the turf program that you talked about, Vice Mayor, and we'll discuss it further. Thank you.
Thank you, I do have a couple of comments, this is now my turn.
The gas tax, Maricela, I, when I read your report, I was not concerned. You seem to be concerned that the gas tax uh, revenues decrease is a concern to you. Uh, we have to project uh, a zero gas tax by twenty-thirty-five. So we're gonna have to start scaling the gas tax from up here down to nothing over the next fourteen years. Um, and it may even be a drastic uh, reduction by twenty-twenty-five. When uh, the, the new regulations come in on electric, electrification of vehicles. So um, I believe as we do our next um, uh. What is it, uh? And what ne- next, uh, oh, god dang it, I can have it, it's in my mind. Send the title too, dang it. Uh, workshop, I'm sorry, next time we do a workshop. Uh, we could talk basically, you know, what the, what do we expect from the gas tax over the future? Um, the air board has a lot of incentives right now that we should capitalize on. If we're going to be replacing a, a tractor. Uh, they have funding available to help me replace a tractor for individuals. They may even have it for uh, uh, municipalities, so we should take a look at that as we go on. But the gas tax for roads maintenance that uh, is going to be uh, uh, reduced. Now, you say that we're gonna have to pick it up with general fund um, or other, other funding. And I wanna caution all of us, as is, yes, we can do that, but it can bite us severely. The, well, we did something for the wastewater treatment plan, I believe it was, by taking care of the road. Uh, and now that is now part of our maintenance and effort. That we have to continuously buy for SB one and some other programs. So if we're going to submit or use general fund for projects that typically have. Um, a, a budget item, uh, let's be careful. I, I don't wanna have um, some future, I mean, so having to say, boy, they weren't smarter than using their general fund. Getting rid of the, the, the tractor, I truly believe it is imperative. That was, anytime you rent a, a vehicle like that, uh, is gonna cost us more in the long run. And I suggest, uh, I hope uh, others agree. And when we have something that we have to rent because of the replacement item, that we brought to that knowledge earlier. So we can ascertain if we can afford it now and move it. Uh, instead of, of um, contributing. Although I do like contributing to the economy, but I like to contribute to our economy better. For the citizen request management system, I agree we need one. I've, I've been agreeing that we needed one for uh, well before jail羁押. Uh, but I wanna make sure that we get the best one. And, and I think we need to be certain that it covers all aspects. I agree with all the council members' remarks stating that it is necessary, but it has to cover everything. It also has to cover, you know, business licensing, it has to cover the efficiencies that we gain as a municipality. As we gain as a municipal government, cause if we don't uh, gain those efficiencies. Then we need more people to manage something that something else should be managed for.
Mayor, if I may ask one question of you. Uh, I feel, I'm on the transportation and communication committee, and I feel that there's still a strong uh, chance. That the state, that the, a mileage tax is going to be passed and to replace the gas tax in the future.
That's true, but that's not here yet.
Yeah.
And, and not only that, it has very little flavor for the Central Valley and in the hills. It has flavor for uh, the, the richer, less commutable. Um, counties and cities. So uh, until that egg is hatched, uh, let's assume that it is not gonna be hatch right away. Or at all, because people are saying that if we go away from vehicle, I mean, from the gas tax. Something else has to come on in, and even if it's vehicle miles traveled, they're not gonna do away with the gas tax. Because as I read recently, a couple of bills. Uh, they're going to penalize those in rural areas with a greater gas tax. And this was a budget, he found a couple hundred billion dollars. And in that, Maricela, he also stated that he was going to use some of that funding to write Calpers. Um, I know it's concerning to us, it could probably write Calpers for the state. And ignore everybody else, but I believe that as we move forward. We need to at least look at his proposals and hopefully get our inputs through our electeds. Uh, to um, uh, support. Clarification and rectification for the cities. Uh, for example, i- i- if the state did so well in the stock market and has, what, what is their hundred twenty billion dollars? They just have, they're gonna, this is gonna buy boats with six hundred dollars per. hundred twenty billion dollars they just have, they're gonna, this is gonna buy boats with six hundred dollars per person and and all all of that funding came from the stock market. And now CalPERS is going to do their assessment and tell us that we have to pay more. I'm concerned that there's, and I'll say it right out, there's fraud in CalPERS. The last thing is the turf and drought issue. I agree California State has some uh monies. I don't know if they're gonna put any monies into this new program, but let's capitalize on that as we go forward and then use our local funds. That's I'd rather use uh OPM than uh our own monies. I have a couple more comments, but I won't say them now. As as now, we can we can talk about this between us as council members.
Hey, Mayor, uh would you mind commenting on the Public Works Building just so we can make sure we get some direction there?
I like uh uh Councilmember Bartina Martinez's idea of modular uh modular building. Uh I believe that there's some really great buildings that you could get going into that for a uh a a great price. But if it's gonna be from the ground up, I believe you'll get lesser uh due to a lot of circumstances. But yes, I'm for the the Public Work Administration Building. I think King Michael needs his own good office.
We will be looking at something similar to what we did at the wastewater treatment plant, which is a modular style. It doesn't look like a modular because it's actually set on a foundation. So we will be looking at getting something nice, but yet that's that works for them.
And keep in mind that you're in a residential area.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and uh Mayor and and Councilmember Hernandez both made the, I think, really fair point about the citizen request management system and just being really sure that it's a system that is comprehensive and really works for the community. Uh because as Maricela and I discussed, as we, you you really only wanna do this once. You don't wanna try to tell the community, hey, download an app and then like two years later, we decide we don't like the app and tell them all to delete that app and download a new app. I mean, that that's just, that'd be a disaster. So one of the things we can do is, it sounds like there's a, the council wants to move forward with some type of solution here. Almost all of the solutions are right around the same cost, you know, within a thousand or a couple thousand dollars. So um maybe what we can do is have a have a future item where Michael can sort of show you or play test some of these concepts for council, because I I totally understand that you five are gonna wanna feel really comfortable. This is, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's an important PR tool. It's an important reporting tool. And we want it to be useful and we want it to, you know, the language question is a really good one. Is it going to be usable for people that speak Spanish and other languages? Um and how would that work? Uh so we'll work on that and we'll assume as part of moving forward with the budget that we're going to purchase some type of solution, some type of technology. And it may be this system or we may go back to the drawing board and look at a couple others and present them to you.
And I like that idea. What I truly want is a universal throughout the uh the city government. I'd like to have Donna be able to use it uh in in plans, uh transferring documents between one and the other. Have everything electronic. Uh this idea of being a paper um society, we're we're paperless now. Building permit as well as uh business licenses. All should be one-stop app shopping and not one that is a uh one shop stop for uh potholes, one shop stop for licenses. You you know what I mean, Sean. We were there in in Long Beach in two thousand eighteen and we saw some fantastic ones. I just would like to see fantastic ones. This may be fantastic. I don't know. I haven't seen it.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Thank you. Uh Maribel, I mean, excuse me, Annabelle. Maribel is a an employee. Ma- uh Annabelle, is there any public comment? Annabelle, am I muted? Maricela, are there any public comments? Sean, are there any public comments?
It sounds to me, because I can hear her from her office, that maybe Annabelle's having some mic issues. I am not seeing any on the attendees with the raised hand and then Annabelle will have to tell us if there's any uh written comments.
Okay, I'm not gonna move forward without Annabelle. Annabelle, can you text Sean with the answers? By the way, Maricela, great job.
No, no public comment, uh Mayor. I just got that from Annabelle.
Thank you very much. Uh you have the direction from the council and is there anything you require further before we move forward, Sean?
Nope, we got what we need for special revenue. Next meeting, you'll have general fund, which is quite a bit more complicated.
All right. We're gonna move on to item nine point two, Workshop American Rescue Plan. Uh Sean, you are up.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Okay. Sharing screens. Can we all see me? Or are you seeing?
We're seeing your uh presentation.
The full screen?
No, you need to swap it.
Swap it? Okay, okay. Got it. Okay, there we go. Um thank you, uh Mayor and Council. So um we're pretty excited. This is um, this is a very preliminary item, just to sort of get council's creative uh thought process rolling as to how we were going to choose to allocate and spend um a significant amount of American Rescue Plan dollars coming to the city of Riverbank. And I'm gonna go through a little bit about the history, um how much we expect to get, how how the funding works and then what some of the what we know so far. And this is evolving. So everything I say tonight could very well change next week, but this is what we know today. So as you know, in um March, on March eleventh uh of this year, President Joe Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan, which was a unprecedented one point nine uh trillion dollar spending plan that was designed to aid um in the COVID nineteen response as well as the recovery of our economy after a year and a half of being shut down. Um a huge part of that um funding package is three hundred and sixty billion for state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. This was a huge lobbying effort on behalf of the National League of Cities, League of California Cities, our city council members, uh you name it. Um trying to really advocate for our community to make sure that we were going to get um an allocation. Um at one point, there was even discussion that cities uh under fifty thousand, we're not gonna get any funding. Um and so it would only go to larger cities and urban centers. Um but fortunately, every single incorporated community in the United States will receive some American Rescue Plan dollars under this bill. Our um, excuse me, our allocation will be four point six eight million dollars over a a two-year period to give you a sense of scale. Um our general fund budget's gonna be more this year, but in gen- in last couple of years, we've been right around the ten million dollar mark in the general fund. So this would represent essentially fifty percent or a little less than fifty percent of our general fund revenues in any given year. So it's a significant amount of funding, um especially given that it's fairly discretionary and on how it can be used. The focus from the feds is on economic recovery, stabilizing local government, and uplifting our communities. And it needs to be spent completely by December thirty first of twenty twenty four. And so if we receive our first payment in June, that'll give us about three and a half years to to um deliver. Uh here are some general allowable uses. Uh as I said earlier, this is a super evolving s- uh situation. We found that with the CARES Act, um in the beginning, it was very restrictive and you could only use it for PPE basically and a couple other COVID-related things. And then as the CARES Act expanded, um a number of other appropriate uses were were allowed by the Department of Treasury. So we think that probably will occur. I'm sure that the Treasury is getting thousands of questions a day about what their guidance actually means. But the the language that they've used in the guidance document is multiple times really uh references that they want communities. They want this to be flexible money. They want communities to be creative with regard to how using it and how how will best uh benefit their community as it relates to to the recovery of COVID nineteen. Uh so you see uh COVID nineteen expenditures, that would be very similar to the kind of um uh funding that we used during the CARES Act, masks, um other kind of public health uh programs and outreach, things like that. I would say that in general, we probably have slightly less of a need for that now just because of the vaccine rollout and um and the changes in mask guidance. So there's, it's not as urgent as it maybe was during during the fall. Gen- uh lost general fund revenue, this this doesn't just relate to general fund. It it could be really any revenue that you could attribute as lost during the COVID nineteen response. You'll hear more about this next week during our general fund update. Um but we're gonna have a tough time making the case that we have a significant sales tax loss or uh or really property tax loss as a result of COVID nineteen, because that's not really what the numbers are showing. Uh our economy was pretty resilient in, at least in Riverbank. I know some other communities did struggle, but ours um has especially with regard to crossroads, um and uh we're we're seeing pretty positive numbers along those lines. So it's gonna be difficult for us to to use the funds for that purpose. However, uh you'll see later in the report that we did lose quite a bit of money in recreation programs, facility rentals, and that all of that funding is recoupable back to the beginning of the pandemic. Vaccine clinic staffing, not really a priority for the city of Riverbank, just because those services are provided by nonprofits in the county. Downtown core economic support, there's some language in the guidance that sort of focuses some of this um funding um on downtown economic development kind of projects. We do think that it's totally appropriate, if council is supportive, to do another round of small business assistance and nonprofit support. There are a handful of nonprofits that are critical to our community that didn't get funded the first go-around. Not not because we didn't want to, but either because they didn't apply or for a variety of other reasons. So we think that's a totally appropriate. Homeless facilities and support, uh although it's not overtly stated in the guidance, it does seem to be quite clear as I look at a number of other communities setting up some spending plans that affordable housing and uh and homeless facilities and support as they relate to to, you know, the the COVID nineteen pandemic are are appropriate expenditures. PPE, we probably will have some minor costs there just to make sure we're staying as safe as possible, even as we emerge from the pandemic. IT infrastructure was called out. Um I don't know why. I suspect it has to do with some of the recent hacks that have occurred um eh on municipal municipalities. Um recreation program modifications, this is fairly important. Obviously, we're we're trying to get as aggressive as possible with our rec programs to restart that department. And so we may need to spend a little money to modify the programs to make sure everyone stays safe. Uh broadband expansion is probably one of the more interesting ones that was um uh included in the legislation just because it does seem that the federal government is really trying to attempt to use some of this money to bridge the digital divide, which is a problem for Riverbank. I think anybody that lives in Riverbank knows that depending on where you live, you may have more spotty internet coverage than others. And um this may be a opportunity for us to address that by expanding some of that infrastructure as well as, you know, things like a publicly available Wi-Fi network or Wi-Fi in all of our parks or any of those kinds of ideas that we've talked about a number of times in the past, but never had funding for. Affordable housing, we talked about that. And then finally, um you know, while four point six million dollars is an awful lot of money, in the public infrastructure world, we could use that in two weeks. Um so we certainly could design and um create projects that meet the threshold of what they're calling public infrastructure. It doesn't appear that they're ki- they're they're identifying those kinds of projects as like road infrastructure projects. They're talking mostly about water, sewer, and storm drain kinds of projects. And we do have uh a handful of those that that we could um tap. So I'm I'm not gonna go through all of these because we sort of talked through them, but here are just some general ideas about things as we were um uh just spitballing in the office about how could we, how could we best spend this money? These are just some general ideas. I, we are going to drill down much more deeply into each of these, but I wanna just sort of use these to help kind of get your your creative thought process rolling. I wanna just go through a quick little thing because I think because of the amount of funding that we're gonna receive, I think we need to really frame this as a story and frame this as a branding effort, because this is an opportunity for us to really move Riverbank forward in a meaningful way. And I have a slide later um that states that we likely will never ever receive this amount of federal funding with this few strings attached to do basically whatever we want. It probably never happen again, at least not in our lifetimes. And so it's really an opportunity for this city council to to move Riverbank forward in a meaningful way that would not be possible without this funding or very hard to do. So if you think about our us, this is a story. Our response has been, you know, we are a non-entitlement city, so we didn't get a lot of the same uh direct funding support that some of those cities did. Um we have attempted to do what we can to protect our community, employees, and partner agents uh agencies. We've had to make changes to our city facilities to make sure that uh, you know, in some cases, we've had to close them. In some cases, we've had to reduce capacity, um all to keep customers safe, to keep citizens stay safe. We've provided significant residence resident assistance and coordinated resident assistance that was provided by the county. We've pres- uh also provided significant small business assistance and nonprofit assistance. And that has led to some budget realities for us in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two that, you know, without this funding, we would have a, we would have a bit of more of a hole to dig out of. In the rebuild process, you know, we think that if we're thinking about this as a three-part story, the second part is rebuild. So how do we rebuild thereafter having to spend the last year and a half hamstrung and not able to do a lot of the normal services that we provide? Uh part of that is restoring some of the lost revenue so Parks and Rec can operate as it did before the pandemic. Um we wanna promote the economic recovery effort the best way we can, whether it be for small business or more generally. We must improve our IT infrastructure and other infrastructures uh as, you know, typically that kind of money comes from a general fund. Um and this is our opportunity to have the federal government help subsidize some of that. Potentially, we uh need to look at using some of these funds to acquire appropriate facilities to serve our homeless. This has been a huge gap in our community for many years and it's been the most difficult puzzle to solve. How do you create a system of care where you have no funding to do so? Um and then I think um the last one, uh you know, obviously the recreation program we addressed. But I think we really need to think about how we strategically invest these resources so we can provide maximum benefit to the community and businesses. I want, I think the council would want to look back on our plan when it's executed and say, we got every single dollar out of that four point six eight million and put it towards something positive for the community. So um a little story, a little extra, last little part of the presentation here is just about our recovery. It should say recovery, not recover, but both work. You know, our sales tax performance has has been exceeding our expectations as I menag- uh as I mentioned. Our residential, commercial, industrial growth continue aggressively. Uh we continue to work on Capitol Street water and sewer projects. None of that has changed. We have, uh as council has supported, restarted many of our community events. There's one community event going out, going on right outside my office right now, and that's the farmer's market. Um and we have restarted many of our critical city services that had to be put on hold. And we've continued to try to bring forward some of the capital projects that were delayed, at least initially as a result of this pandemic. So what we would like some direction from the council tonight is, it doesn't need to be super detailed, but generally So what we would like some direction from the council tonight is, it doesn't need to be super detailed, but generally. We're receiving two point three million. Excuse me, two point three to two point four million in June. And then a year from June, we'll receive the other. The idea that I think we need to think through is, of all of these different ideas, how do we want to generally allocate those funds? And it doesn't need to be specific. It just needs to be general at this point. And then do you want to think about setting aside some portion of them as a reserve? So that as things change over the next three and a half years, you still have some additional money to address those needs and concerns. Outside of your core spending plan. And, you know, as I mentioned, this is an unprecedented opportunity. We probably will never receive funds like this again. I do think that one of the things councils should discuss a little bit is how do we want to brand this effort? I would, I think it would be great to see some projects occur and have a brand that's been thought up by the city council or endorsed by the city council that, you know, we make a. Sign and put it next to one of our projects that says, you know, this was brought to you by the Riverbanks Recovery Program Plan or the the city council's revitalizing Riverbank Plan. However, you choose to to represent it because what we've learned from Mezrel and SB one is it's critically important that people know how the services in their community are being paid for. And so, and we talked about the last bullet there, so I won't continue on there. I did want to add one last slide, which is just in case you want to know a little bit more about other things that it funds, that the American Rescue Plan funds, here are just a few. The first couple are sort of old news now. But there's quite a bit of money going into rent and utility assistance to mortgage assistance, small business, schools are getting a significant amount of money to reopen. You have a number of work related items. And then there's a variety of of. Bursting grant programs that will be coming out in the next. Two years that City of Riverbank can hopefully tap into. So that's my presentation. I'm sorry that it was a little longer than I had hoped, but I really wanted to give a full view of of what we're looking at here so that council can have a meaningful discussion about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments, push on.
Sure, I'll go first. So let's see. So there's there's quite a quite a bit here to cover. So. Sean, I think I think that's a great idea how you're trying to roll out in stages, the branding thing. I didn't really have a preference or one picked out, but I like one of your slides that says Riverbank rebuilds. That kind of just stood out to me. But I'm not, you know, I'll defer that to staff for the creativity stuff. That's not what I do. Let's see. I think the one, I think the one department that was impacted the most was Parks and Rec. So if we can expand our our help with the programs there. Recoup the facility rentals, I think that's, I think that would be super beneficial. Whoever's idea about the Wi-Fi capabilities at our parks, I love that idea. I think that's going to just get people out to the parks. I think for me, the next priority would probably ensuring maybe our small businesses and nonprofits receive any assistance. Any gaps that are there from the from the other funding that you just showed in that last slide. Even some of the even some of the businesses that didn't qualify for like the RAD program that Councilmember Hernandez was pushing out. There was some missed opportunities there. The rest of the list there, I didn't really rank it, but I do believe we do need that IT upgrades, improved cybersecurity for sure. Making sure our wells are protected. If there's any funding available for our homeless transitional housing. You know, I'm on board for that. I've been pushing, was pushing on the shop for that for years with no success. I'd support any subsidizing of additional affordable housing, partnering up with a developer here locally would be a great idea. I think we all kind of learned a lot about this pandemic, the pandemic. I think one thing I learned is outdoor dining is here to stay. So maybe. A way to kind of attract more businesses to and customers to the downtown core. Maybe we can set up a little downtown core investment grant, kind of let the businesses decide on how they want to move forward. With the two point three four million being allocated this year. And then another two point three four being allocated next year. I do think we should consider infrastructure projects. The one specifically, the Seventh Street Outfall. Keeping climate impacts on top of mind as we do those and as we consider those projects to fund. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
I'd like to just make a couple of comments about housing. I ran across just a few weeks ago, a new technology called three D computer building. And it's fascinating because it they're doing this now, and it's actually being guided by computers. They can build a house in two days that would take usually twenty days, and they use in a type of special type of cement. And the computer actually guides the nozzle of the of the cement. Machine that lays it and it goes in layers around and around. It's fireproof, it's quick, it's clean. And I'd like to see us look at other new technologies to for some of this money too, because there could be benefits if this technology. Even though it's new now, it seems to be catching on, and it could save us a considerable amount of money in affordable housing and things of that nature. So that we could spend our money in a better way. Look it up on the internet. You'll find things about it. I saw it first on a TV program. And it's absolutely fascinating the way they're doing it because they don't need as much work. They don't need as big of a workforce to do it with. So they're saving money on labor and they're building the houses a lot cheaper. And they're sturdier because it's a special kind of cement that's fireproof, bug proof, et cetera. And once you get it up, you can decorate it any way you want. Let's look at some new technologies that might make this money go further also that are coming about. And I agree with a lot of the things that our vice mayor said just before me, so that I don't want to be redundant about. But main thing is we want to spend this money as carefully and to get the best we can for our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Who's next?
This is Councilmember Barbara Martinez. I really like the idea of being able to save some of the money for a rainy day. We don't know what our unfunded liabilities will be for PERS and how it's going to affect our general fund. So I believe that just being able to save some of the money. In both years would be a great idea for us to do. I also like the. Verbiage of maybe Riverbank revitalization or Riverbank. I don't know, come back or we're here or something. I don't know, but I do like some kind of language that shows that. We're, as a council, we are, you know, investing in our in our city. We love our city. We do what we can for our city and and our residents and our community. So I just think that we need to be able to advertise more, just like we do with our SV funds, when we do a project SB one funds and. You know, just let people know what we're doing so we can be transparent as we said that we want to do for whatever we plan for the city. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Darlene. I think the funds are. Not authorized to be used for any retirement program. There are severe restrictions in that that form. It's open in a lot of other areas, but I believe for unfunded mandates. That's going to be our responsibilities, and I think it's incumbent upon the state.
Mayor, and I apologize, I should have said this in my in my presentation. You are correct. We we are not allowed to, technically, we're not allowed to set these monies into a rainy day fund or use them for unfunded liabilities or. We can't use them as matches for other federal grants. Those are kind of the general restrictions. However. That doesn't mean that you can't reserve a portion of these funds. For some future qualified project under the guidelines of the future. In other words, you don't need to spend every single last dollar. You've got quite a few years to make a decision on it. And so. If I take Councilmember Barbara Martinez's comment, it was also just sort of about making sure that there's enough down the road if there's something else that comes up.
Absolutely. Okay.
I guess to Vice Mayor's point, the pandemic taught us a lot, and I think one of the major things that he took away is that. There are a lot of inequities, and so. I think that we should be mindful of that as we move forward with projects and not exactly rush to spend it, but have that lens as well. And I also wonder if there is any way, rather than reinventing the wheel, if there's. The county, for example, if they have projects that are ongoing where we can address some larger issue together.
Such as?
Housing or homelessness programs.
Vice Mayor, you want to tell us about your successful shot?
I'll pass on that one, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. I was not making light of the situation. There are things that that there are shortfalls. And a lot of the programs that are available for this county that's not coming our way. And we have to make our own opportunities. And I believe that Riverbank is making their own opportunities. And some of it you'll be addressed tonight. But I think. We have to be very cautious about what we decide to spend the money on immediately because. There's going to be future funding opportunities coming from the infrastructure. Whether it's a one point five trillion dollar or a two point five trillion dollar on wastewater treatment, water treatment. The IT, the the digital divide, all of those, I think we should wait on before we decide, hey, let's jump into this. Because that funding should be coming available. The HUD and and the feds are coming out with a extensive amount of money for homelessness. They think we haven't thought about this pro this problem for a long time. We have. We're ready to pounce on any funding you have. We have programs ready, and I think the state is going to be very liquidive towards Riverbank here shortly. And we want to take advantage also of the feds. And the feds infrastructure, they're going to have a lot on wastewater and water. And we are. Are going to see this in the next couple of months. That we are poised to be a major contributor to a region and that we should be funded. Homelessness funding is by the state. They're going to have. A couple of almost a billion dollars, and we're ready to use that money. The the county, if we're going to partner with a county, I would say we're going to be disappointed. The county, although they are our granddaddies and they're supposed to take care of us. I haven't looked at Riverbank as a viable use of funding. They would rather warehouse homeless than try to transition the homeless. We have a plan and we're going to stick to that plan, I would hope. Darlene, I liked your idea about branding. Let's take a look at how we're going to brand. Sean, your idea of branding was fantastic. You probably got it from a staff member. I'm sorry I said that. But let's take a look at also the future as we we brand Riverbank. Let's brand Riverbank's future, not only on this funding that we're going to get, but the future funds we're going to get from the LRA. I've been thinking about how we can brand that in the future. So let's combine these efforts and any other possible efforts going forward. And on for the IT upgrades, I want us for the city itself. We need to identify the needs, not only for Riverbank. Municipality. But for the residents. We have several programs that are complimentary. Let's get them working together. We have Intelsight, fantastic organization who can assist us in some renewal of of. High speed internet throughout the city. So we have to be creative. Who said new tech? Was that you, Cal? Okay, I agree. There's a lot of new technology out there. I saw the same show you saw, but I saw it in two thousand seventeen. So we, there, there's a lot of new technology out there that as this funding becomes available. Where where are we going in fifty years? How do we get there? And can this funding get us launched? Until we get additional funding from the LRA, until we figure out additional funding coming on down. So my. Suggesting is that we be cautious about a decision right away until we see what the federal government brings. What the state government brings. And then we move forward with a solid plan. And and I I hope we get a strategic planning process. Because I believe this would be perfect for us to develop where we're going to go and how we're going to get there.
So I I I've got a. Long list of scribbled notes here that are is very helpful to me. I do think that the comment made by. Councilmember Hernandez and and not just now the mayor about not rushing into anything. What what we're noticing is, and I've noticed this from some of our neighboring jurisdictions, is there's a. A desire to just immediately get out there. And I do think it's a very smart idea to. Be as strategic as possible since this is fairly precious funding that we won't ever get again. And, you know, we were very, I'm biased, obviously, but. The admin team here, the Greater City of Riverbank team, we we were very creative with CARES money, and I think we can be equally creative here. So maybe what we'll do is I'll start to put together the bare bones of what we've discussed tonight. Knowing that we've got a lot of holes in it. And then as part of strategic planning, which we're we're targeting for. Mid to late June, we'll have this be a whole section of of the experience where, separate of the projects and plans that the council has, we're just going to talk about American Rescue Plan. How do we want to do it? So I give us some time over the next, you know, three to four weeks to really think through it. And in the meantime, if any of the council or any community member or staff member has a really neat branding logo or 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 slogan. Email it to me because I don't really like mine. There are probably better ones out there.
Sean, I have a suggestion. I think that we're known as the city of action. So if we can combine. Our our history, city of action with a new word or a new phrase, just keep it all together. I don't know how or what, but I'd like to see the city of action in there and then whatever, maybe revitalizing or rebuild or something like that, but still keep in the city of action.
Okay.
Well, lights, camera, action. Just kidding.
I like that idea, Darlene, and I would like to suggest that as we move forward for this one hundredth. That we take some of these ideas and be creative for the future. Thank you, Darlene. That was good. All right. That was general guidance before we move on. Annabelle, are you there?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you tonight. Good, thank you. Do we have any public comment or written comment?
There is no one wishing to speak, and we did not receive any written comments on this item.
All right, thank you. I bring it back to the council for any final comments. All right, we're going to move on to item ten point one. A resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving a subdivision improvement agreement for Bruins Heights with DR Horton. Inc. And authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Sean, you're on.
Mayor, our associate planner, Gabriel, is going to take this staff report. This is just a case anyone didn't know. And also just to throw a throw a little fanfare his way. This was Kerry Pope's old project, River Run, which has now been sold to DR Horton and is now. Which has now been sold to DR Horton and is now called Bruin Heights. Same project, different name. Um and Gabe will take it from here.
Evening, City Council. Thank you.
Good evening.
Let me just share the PowerPoint. Okay, as Sean uh just, Sean just mentioned, yes, this was the old River Run project, which was approved on December twelfth. Twenty seventeen. Um there the city council, at that time, the city council approved tentative map, a general plan amendment and a planned development. Zone for the for this project. The sub- the subdivision improvement agreement is a contract between the city and the developer, DR Horton CA three Inc. Providing security to the city that the improvements will be completed. And for that, um the developer had provided two bonds to the city, a performance bond and a um labor bond. To ensure that the improvements for the streets, the sidewalks, the curbs would be made in case the developer backed out of the deal. Of the development, I mean. And staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution approving the subdivision improvement agreement with DR Horton. For Bruin Heights and to direct the city manager to execute the agreement. And um this is the first part. Uh the next item on the agenda tonight is also the final map. So they go hand in hand. Um and if you have any questions, um I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. This is Councilmember Barbara Martinez. I was just about to say, where's the map? So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Annabelle, are there any uh public comments on this?
There is no one wishing to speak and we did not receive any written comments on this item.
All right, thank you. I bring it back to the council for consideration.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I make a motion that we approve item ten point one.
Now, since no one's tapped in, I will second. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Barbara Martinez and second by me.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we are moving along and. Excuse me one moment. Is the next item ten three?
Ten point two.
Ten point two. Why don't I have ten point two?
Well, I did.
I do have ten point two. I have written all over ten point two. I am so sorry, council. A resolution approving final map zero two dash twenty twenty one for DR Horton CA three Inc. For six two seven two Central Avenue APN zero six two dash zero two one, that's zero zero one.
Thank you, Mayor. I will go ahead and make the presentation for the uh final map for Bruin Heights. And let me just share the PowerPoint with you again. Okay, this is the final map approval, um as you uh just as you all just approved the uh subdivision improvement agreement. Now, this is the final map. Um this project is consists of nine point one acres. Yeah, the zoning is planned development. It will include fifty one single-family units, a basin and internal streets. And the density for this project is five point six dwelling units per acre. Um the project, the planning commission approved the River Run tentative map. Um for the fifty one units and also the general plan amendment. Um and then also which changed the zoning from medium density to low density residential. And then also the planned development um zone, which allowed for the five thousand square foot lots. Provided that amenities were provided in this project. And that was done in on November eleventh, twenty seventeen, because there was a general plan amendment and the zone change. It required city council approval, which was approved on um December twelfth uh twenty seventeen. Last year, on April fourth, twenty twenty, the city council approved a development agreement for River Run. And earlier this year, um on March sixteenth of twenty twenty one, the planning commission approved the architecture and site plan review for Bruin Heights. This is the assessor's map for the property that's located on the northeast corner of Central Avenue and California Avenue, as you can see. It's east of the high school and it's surrounded by uh ranchettes to the northeast and the south. Um. And here's an aerial of the site again, um on the southwest corner is actually Countryside One. And you could see the high school there on the on the west, on the west side of the project. And this is the tentative map that was approved in twenty seventeen. And as you can see, the final map is um in substantial conformance with the tentative map. Um you can see there the fifty one units of for the project along with the basin. Which is uh noted as Lot A. The architecture for this project, um the applicant is developer, um DR Horton's providing five models. There's four elevation types, Americano, farmhouse, mid-century and craftsman. There are fourteen color schemes and the proposed architecture is consistent with the River River Run design guidelines. Which were pri- which were approved in um December twenty twenty seventeen um for the architecture for this project. And here's some examples of the conceptual renderings for the, or or sorry, of the elevations for the project. Of the different housing types. This is a an example of the model of N four one five is what's called. This is for the Americano. And this is an example of the craftsman type of housing that they're going to have there on the property on the on the lots. And then this is an example of a two-story um farmhouse is what they're calling this type of um home. And the project will not have any significant effect on the environment. Um initial study, an initial study, a mitigated negative declaration. Uh was followed with Dennis Ross County and and is consistent with the sequel guidelines. And the recommendation by staff is to approve the final map. Um and the resolution based on the required findings that the map is con- inconforming with the provisions of the subdivision law and city code. And um staff is here to answer any questions as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabriel. Is there any questions?
No question, but Gabriel, I just want to say thank you for showing the different types of homes that will be uh in. Uh River Run or I'm sorry, Bruin Heights. Um. It's just good to see what, you know, with the kind of like a a visual to have to see what the homes will look like. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
And there's a comments or questions? Annabelle, are there any public comments written or oral?
There are no public comments written or oral.
Well, thank you very much. I bring it back to the council before I move it for any consideration. Gabriel, what of the square footage of the uh of the homes? The 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 single story? I had a a uh experience with a ladder and so height is I'm going to go for a single story.
Okay, let's see.
That's like a jet.
From what I recall, it was a fourteen hundred square feet to twenty two hundred square feet. Um terms of the uh unit sizes, the lot sizes were five thousand to um ten thousand four hundred fifty three square feet of lot size.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's something for someone who doesn't want to go upstairs anymore to consider. But I'm bringing it back to the city council to consider.
Uh Vice Mayor Uribe here, I'll make a motion to approve item ten point two.
Uh Vice uh Councilmember Campbell, I'll second it.
Do we have a uh motion to approve ten point two by the vice mayor and a second by Councilmember Ca- Campbell? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez? Hernandez?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Pardon me? Ten point three, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with National Demographic Corporation for municipal. Redistricting services.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city clerk, Annabelle Aguilar, will take care of this report this evening.
Okay, let me turn on my video. Hello, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Get this PowerPoint next.
There you are.
Okay. So, good evening and tonight we are going to be seeking your approval to contract with. National Demographics Corporation for redistricting services. So as you may know, California state law requires that after a federal census is conducted. Electoral district-based jurisdictions are required to conduct a redistricting process. Now, the redistricting process um actually means the redrawing of legislative district lines. Also considered boundaries following a a census and which will accommodate the population shifts. And keep those districts as equal in population as possible. In our case, that will be the four councilmember districts uh boundaries that were established uh one through four. And that currently exist. Um I just wanted to make a note here that as I stated in my report, you will be provided with a more in-depth. Comprehensive presentation of the redistricting process at the at a regular meeting in June. Um council meeting, city, June council meeting. So. So first and foremost, to begin the process, we want the, we need the city to secure demographic. And redistricting um analysis services. Um also to guide me through all the steps that were required by law. And there have been new, various new laws that have been passed. So um this service is an expert service that is provided by only a handful of companies. And these companies will be providing this specialized service in California. To a number of local districts throughout California. And because of that, it is important, it is actually very vital that the city council take action to contract. With um a consultant to provide us the services. And contracting as soon as possible so we can begin this process. So um NDC, National Demographics Corporation, was actually the company that conducted the demographics analysis. And successfully um guided a staff-led districting process, if you recall. Uh for the city of Riverbank back in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. And that's where we created the map with all the boundaries and we created the four councilmember districts that exist today. So it is our recommendation that the council approve the proposed resolution to allow the city manager. To execute a concentr- uh a contract with NDC. Uh and not to exceed fifty five thousand for new municipal redistricting services. And um once we get that in place, we will be working with the consultant and then. We will make sure that we bring, like I said, a comprehensive presentation to you in June. So you will understand the processes, tasks, directions. Uh schedule of events that will be occurring. It's a very, very intensive uh process. But we will work together, staff and council, to get through this. If you have any questions, that's it. Thank you.
There any questions, Annabelle?
No questions here, Vice Mayor. Uh Uribe here, just uh just look forward to working within DC.
Right, Annabelle, are there any questions from the public? Whether there are comments or questions?
Uh council, there is no one wishing to speak and we did not receive any written comments on the site.
Okay, I'll bring it back. Before I give it to the council, Annabelle, I want to just reiterate what I've I've told you privately. That you have been uh you have taken great pains uh to protect the city of Riverbank. From ourselves uh as a council and from uh those outside. And you've done great and I I trust you implicitly. Uh you seem nervous. I hope you're not nervous.
No.
You just seem nervous.
Oh.
Uh maybe it's the lateness of the hour. So anyway, I I thank you for what you do for the city. And so I'm going to bring this to the city council for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is Councilmember Barbara Martinez. I make a motion, we approve item ten point three.
Vice Mayor Uribe here, I'll second that.
We have a uh uh motion to approve ten point three by Councilmember Barbara Martinez. And a second by the Vice Mayor. Uh roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
I want to thank everybody tonight for their um tolerance of the meeting. It's been a little long, so. We're going to move on to uh uh comments and reports. First one will be from staff. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of comments here. Um if you could, if you were sitting in my office right now or or in Annabelle's. Um you would hear the buzz of a bass guitar outside of the window. That's because there's a band across. The street playing at the farmer's market. It I didn't, I haven't been able to go out, but it looked to me just based on uh looking out my window. Um that the there was quite a few people out there again for a second week in a row, so that's pretty good. I was. Um a little concerned, um I apologize, I don't know why my video is off. I I was a little concerned that uh that maybe it would die off after the first week, just. Um you never know with these things, but the the organizers are very motivated. They're really focusing on getting more or uh produce vendors. So I think we stand a good chance of continued success where the city is going to try to have a booth out there every week. And I'm in the process of trying to go around to each department and. Um see who'd like to represent the city on a given week, uh you know, with information for the community. Um as I notified council uh the other day, um at the eleventh hour, we were able to submit. A ESG grant for homeless services last Friday. Um. I uh we will be presenting that grant to a for a first round grant review panel on Thursday. And then I think there's another uh step after that the following week, so we should know here fairly soon. Whether or not we are going to get funded. Um the, as I mentioned earlier, the wastewater treatment master plan is complete. And will be in your city council agenda packets for the June eighth meeting. It's a very large document. And um so if you if you don't get through it all, don't worry about it. We will have a number of meetings to to analyze and digest it. And also, as Ju- as Maricela mentioned, we are targeting next meeting, the June eighth, for our general fund budget workshop as well. And one final comment, I think she's still on the line, Donna would like to give an update on a uh uh. New group and planning effort that she is involved in.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Annabelle, may I share my screen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Annabelle, may I share my screen?
Well, we can see you.
Ah, I just lost, I hit the wrong button, I'm sorry, I do this all the time, one of these days I'll get it right. Okay, here we go. All right. So, as you may know, city zoning and policies tend to be reactive instead of proactive. So I wanted to share with you that there is a free conference that's coming up on June ninth, it's online from ten till noon. Uh you need to register by June first, and there is a keynote speaker, Dan Heath. Who um has written a book on solving problems before they happen. So, we're talking about not just reacting to incidents and events that happen. But actually planning for it in the Central Valley and being prepared for when those types of things happen. The thing I wanna point out is they have um, uh, uh added a Central Valley breakout room. In which I believe Modesto and uh Tuolumne County and uh Riverbank uh will be co-hosting. Uh Gabrielle will be our co-host for that, and we're gonna talk about uh California law SB one thousand. And what that is, is when cities now update their general plans. And they look at more than one or two elements, they're required to have um environmental justice policies. Or an environmental justice element uh be added in there. So, since in the future, in the near future, we're going to be updating our general plan. Uh we'd like to get out ahead of the curve and start getting the public interested in environmental justice issues. We'd like to um sometime in the near future, put together a committee of citizens. Who are interested in environmental justice issues to help us create policy and um. Bring this to the forefront, uh which is really needed in our city as well as in California. So again, you need to register by June first. Um I can provide additional information if anybody from the public wishes to sign up and can't see all the uh writing on my. Uh flyer there. Uh my number, where I can be reached is two oh nine eight six three seven one two four. I hope you'll join us, thank you very much.
And that'll do it for our staff updates, Mayor.
I know, I was muted, Donna, thank you for that update, I have a quick question on the environmental justice or criteria, I believe.
Yes, sir.
You have to go through before you consider uh an, an element or um, um an article.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
The question is, when we consider environmental justice, there is, there are criteria. That we have to review to either accept an element or uh like a chapter. Is that correct?
Correct, there is a, a long public hearing process that we will be going through, including workshops.
So as we do this, we, it's not the foregone conclusion, this is where we're going. It is the foregone conclusion, we're gonna have to do the process to either develop A, B, or none.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember comments, Councilmember Hernandez.
Um I, Donna and I are on the same page, I actually wanted to share about it too, you get a free book from the author in the. Back box if you register, that's tempting. Um, uh today is also a one-year anniversary of uh George Floyd's death. And um I do wanna mention that um beyond, you know, protests and um. All the media that's going on for us to keep, keep in mind to do the work of um. Social justice work, you know, working within individually and in our communities and in our networks, so. Um I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
Uh I attended the farmer's market this evening as well as uh last week, and I was quite uh happy with what I saw last week. I went just for a half an hour today, cause we, we wanted to go back and see some other things. And I would like to encourage any of you, if you have any other contacts. With any other farmers that have vegetables or things of that nature. That's where I see it being just a little bit weak right now, they've got a lot of crafts and things. But uh if we can, if you know any other farmers that might be willing to come on the Tuesday night, you know, and be there. I would suggest that you talk to them, uh that night is not a night that a lot of other cities are using, so. Other farmers that are doing it in other towns might be willing to come back, da- da- to join us, so. Don't hesitate to contact them if you know them, cause I, that's where we're a little weak, I think, downtown right now with our farmer's market. Next, um illegal fireworks are probably gonna be starting anytime now. And with the winds that we have and the dryness that we have, I think it's our duty to report them as quickly as we can. Uh because there's just no telling what can happen with these winds if the illegal fireworks keep coming on and are. Done at the wrong time, they could put this whole town on fire. And so keep that in mind and mention that to your friends too. I also attended a Friends of Jacob Myers Park uh meeting. And we, Sue is working on a very large grant with the input from several of us, of us from the meeting. And we're also looking at ways to get the old rocket, that's an antique, uh repainted. And we're coming, we're coming up with some new ways to do that, and that is all that I have to say.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Um I attended the Stanislaus Home uh Summit to discuss a proposal of a strategic plan for services. Uh for the homeless, and it came from a survey that was presented to the community of, and of Stanislaus County. So we're, um they're putting that together and then they will present that and uh it should be. For all the loc- locale, uh or for all the cities in Stanislaus County. Um and I attended legislation action days and met with Senator Eggman to discuss the priorities of keeping local control. Which we all know is very important and dear to our heart. Um and thank you to all who have given their military service, there was a beautiful program that um I attended on Friday. And I also look forward to being a part of our Memorial Day service on May thirty-first. And I am inviting everyone to come out to our farmer's market, that was one of the reasons why I was late. Uh showing up to our meeting today because I was there trying to help set up. But it is every Tuesday um until the end of September, and it's five to eight in our downtown, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
I thank you Mayor, so uh just a couple webinars, I'll be attending on June fourth, I'll be attending the Revenue and Taxation Subcommittee. Uh we're gonna be discussing a whole host of legislative updates, um also be attending a webinar. Hosted by the Groundwater Exchange about interconnected surface waters, ecosystems. And engaging stakeholders, and I do plan on attending the memorial service on Monday the thirty-first. Um I hope those that can attend will attend, um it is a virtual event, um but I'll be there in person, thank you.
Thank you very much, just briefly, um Sean is working on a, a strategic planning session. And I think it's very important that we fine-tune a lot of our um plans for the future. Uh monies that we're going to receive, money we plan on receiving, and making sure that uh when we leave. Whenever we leave, uh the, the community will be much better off in the future. Uh the parks uh programs are opening, I'd like the community to, to take a look at all of the uh. Um park openings. Please feel free and safe as you go and, and enjoy them. General plan was mentioned a couple times, we will be doing a general plan update. And there, hopefully during the strategic planning session, we can determine how and where we go with the uh general plan. And one of the things, as we get money, I would like to again be very cautious on how we spend it. Cause I am always fond of OPM, and I do not want to start spending our money when OPM is available. With that, we're gonna go to closed session. The public has a uh three-minute limit to, to discuss any um closed session item. Set for on, on the agenda prior to us going into closed session. First one is item twelve one, liability of claims pursuant to government code. Section five four nine five six point nine five claimant, Antonio Garcia. Agency claim against City of Riverbank, item twelve point two, conference with real property negotiators. Pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Uh property APN zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero five through zero zero seven. Agency negotiator Sean Scully, city manager, property negotiator, Ametis Inc. Property negotiation price terms of payment or both. Item twelve point three, threat to public services or facilities pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven. Consultation with City of Riverbank Director of Emergency Services. Item twelve point four, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Property six four five three Eighth Street, APN one three two dash zero one five. Dash zero three eight, agency negotiator Sean Scully, city manager. Property negotiator Evelyn A. Mitchell, two zero one three Rev Trust Jan Tiasca. Tiascola, property under negotiation, term, price, payment, or both. Conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Property two nine one six slash two nine one zero Sierra Avenue. APN one three two dash zero two two dash zero two five two zero two six. Property negotiator Sean Scully, city manager, property negotiator Evelyn Mitchell. Uh two zero one three Rev Trust Jan Tiascola. Property negotiation terms, price terms, or payment of both. Twelve point six, conference with real property negotiation negotiator. Pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight, property twenty-eight twenty-five Santa Fe Avenue. APN one three two dash zero two four dash zero zero eight. Agency negotiator Sean Scully, city manager, property negotiator Evelyn A. Mitchell. Twenty thirteen Rev Trust Jan T- Tiascola. Property under negotiation, price, term, or payment or both. Is there any uh um public comment, Annabelle?
Mayor, there is no one wishing to speak, nor were there any written comments received on any of these items.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to adjourn to closed session. The report from the closed session uh will be made to the city clerk. And the report will reflect in the minutes of the meeting. Anyone interested in obtaining the report may contact the city clerk at cityclerk@riverbank.org. I'll call two zero nine eight six three one seven nine eight. Saying no questions, we are now adjourned to closed session.